Good evening, and call the meeting into order. This is a meeting of the Hampton Board of Selectmen and Board of Health being held in the townhouse on April 22nd, 2024, with 6:00 PM. This meeting is being conducted in person and remotely using video conferencing. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is anyone recording the meeting other than ourselves? Dalton? Yes? No?
I'm sure he is. Good to see you, Dalton.
Okay. All right. We have minutes?
Yep.
Okay. A regular meeting of March 26, 2024. We did the plans. We, uh, Durham Study Committee completed their report, did some minutes. The Audubon Society was here, and they'll be, uh, we'll talk about some trees and the spongy moth. They'll be back tonight. Shared Health Services was here. Uh, Great Horse was change of manager, the Water District Discussion, Casino Funding Reallocation, the Annual Town Meeting Warrant, Budget Review, One Day Liquor Permit for the Senior Center again. And, uh, Selectmen Reports.
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we have Executive Session minutes of March 26, 2024. Um, this is regard to the, uh, negotiations with the police union.
So a lot of this is not really a decision in this minute, more status and...
Just status and, uh, just back and forth.
Motion to approve without release.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, the Mass Audubon Society, are you on?
Governor is... We're here. Yep.
Good evening.
Good evening. Yeah, thanks. Thanks for having us back. Um, I, this time I brought my colleague Tom here, uh, who's our senior conservation ecologist. Uh, I'm back a little sooner than I had thought. I, so last time I was here, I was planting the seeds for this idea of a project, uh, that we're hoping to do at the Laffenbrook Wildlife Sanctuary that extend, that if, if an agreement from the town would extend onto the town parcel there, uh, back behind the school. So east, east of Big Brook, there's, uh, a parcel that abuts, uh, Mass Audubon land on three sides. Uh, and so I planted the seed last time of maybe we would, uh, maybe it would make sense for us to extend that project that we're looking to do at Laffenbrook, uh, onto the town parcel. Um, and I'm back so soon because we're looking at a funding opportunity that's coming up, a deadline's coming up for the next couple of weeks that we're looking to apply to. Um, and we wouldn't, we wouldn't need to have a agreement in place, but we would need to have, just know that you, that you would approve such a thing, um, uh, us, us doing this project on the town parcel. So I came, uh, tonight just to, one, to bring Tom, who could answer your questions a little bit, a little more detail about what the project looks like. Um, and then also just talk about what the next steps would be for us to get that, that approval from the town. Um, so I thought if Tom, Tom maybe could give it just a quick description of the project that's a little, little better than I gave last time.
But thanks, Jonah, and good evening, everybody. Again, I'm Tom Lotzenheiser, Senior Conservation Ecologist with Mass Audubon and based here in East Hampton. Um, I don't know if I have the ability to share my screen, but I do have a map.
Yeah, hold on one second.
Hold on, he'll give it to you. What's the cat's name?
This is Maggie. The only cat I'm not allergic to. Lucky for me. I guess I want to say, you know, we do have this funding opportunity that's coming up, but, um, even with that, this work may not happen for another year, two, or, or even more. So it's, it's very, uh, preliminary conceptual, um, idea that we're, that we're presenting here. Oh, I can share my screen. Let me, I'll pull up this map. Uh, here we go. So, you know, this isn't necessarily the most detailed map, but it, it does show a little bit about what we have in mind here. And what this is showing is there's, there's a number of different areas. Like here's this area listed as D, T1. Here's T2, T3, T4. And you'll notice that a couple of these polygons, the dark black line is the Mass Audubon boundary. And this parcel here, it's coming, it extends into the sanctuary that also includes this crosshatching, is, uh, part of that, part of the town property there behind the school. Uh, so our, there's a few different, uh, actions that we're intending to do over the next couple of years, one of which is invasive plant management, um, along the Big Brook, uh, riparian corridor or along the brook. And that obviously includes this section of land, of the town land. So that would be, um, potentially cut stem treatment with herbicide. Maybe not right in this general vicinity because there's the drinking water well, but farther up. Um, and then there's this, this polygon T2 represents a forest management project, um, which is a pitch pine, uh, oak heathland management. And that's sort of building off of, uh, our situation at the site where, uh, so many oak trees were killed by, uh, recent, the recent infestation of spongy moth that we thought while we're getting heavy equipment, forestry equipment in there to do, to improve the situation with those dead trees, we could also sort of further open the forest up to, uh, promote, uh, pitch pine heathland, uh, plant community there, which would support a number of the rare and uncommon species that occur, uh, at Laffenbrook. Well, that's, that's sort of the, that's sort of the overview. And I'm glad, you know, to, to answer more specific questions if people have them. Or Jonah, if you have anything to contribute to that. No, it's okay.
Do you think, how much is the property, our, is the town property? You know, how, how many square feet or how many?
Uh, I'll find that out here quickly. Uh, the whole area, so the area that included the, um, you know, he did it with the, that invasive treatment would be along, you know, to the brook and maybe even to the west of the brook. But the forest management was just on the, the eastern part of that parcel. Um, so the, oops, the whole, the whole area that we're talking about is 14 acres. Um, but the, just that, that section east of the brook is, you know, is more like seven or less acres. It's more like, yeah, four, three or four. Four, right. Yeah, four.
But, but not, but not all of it's on town property. That four, that four, right?
No, no, that's, that's the town, that's the part that's on the town property. About, about, about four would, would include, be included in this forest management part of it. Yeah.
In the forest management, what about the invasive species management? I'm concerned about the herbicides.
Yeah.
Right. So I think, I don't think we would propose using herbicides on the town property because it's town property.
I also question the use of herbicides too.
Around the well area.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask. We have, you know, the public wells there that are on Laffenbrook property, part of the east, with, um, numerous acres. And then we also have a lot of residents in that area with, you know, some shallow wells and whatnot. So, you know, the, the use of herbicides in general kind of concerns me.
Obviously, we would be very careful about proposing, well, we wouldn't propose the use of any herbicides within, uh, you know, any area affected by, by drinking water supply.
Right. So what's, what's the radius around a public drink, public water supply? Cause there's, you know, the registered public water supply there on Laffenbrook grounds, which is very close to where we do this management.
Right. I don't know if it's 400 foot offset. I don't, I don't recall off the top of my head, but luckily, most of the plants that we're trying to deal with here, at least in that section of the property, is, um, Japanese barberry, which herbicide is a effective tool, uh, to manage barberry, but it can also be treated with, um, uh, people use like a drip torch essentially to burn the root collar. And, uh, and if that's adequately singed, then it can kill the plant without re-sprouting. Um, so that's an, an alternative method that can be done in, you know, that's protective of, uh...
Is that, is that that plant that winds around the trees?
That's, uh, Roundly Bittersweet is the vine that's everywhere.
Yes, everywhere.
You also talked about the forest management plan. Will that do anything about keeping Laffenbrook open more? I've had a few residents ask, uh, you know, why, why are they closing this all of a sudden? And I know it was because of some of the, the trees from the gypsy moths and whatnot, but does that plan encompass any of that, you know, deforestation to help alleviate the closure of the Laffenbrook property?
It, it does. It does. And the, 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 the trick for us is balancing, um, how to get that work done and in a, in a cost-effective manner, uh, because basically there's no little or no, uh, economic value to, to the standing dead oaks that are right now presenting a public health, uh, health or public safety risk, which is why the sanctuary's been closed, uh, on, on windy days. Um, but if we expand the management footprint to include this oak pitch pine area, there are some trees, and it's not a lot, but it's a, a little bit of an offset um, in, in, in that section of forest to...
That would have some value.
It would have some, some economic value to offset the sort of negative economic, economic value of, of the, dealing with the, uh, the oaks that were killed by spongy moth. Um, and this, this grant opportunity that, uh, Jonah has mentioned is, uh, is part of the NRCS, um, Equip or Environmental Quality Incentive Program, that will pay private landowners to, to do conservation practices on their property. And some of those con- conservation practices include, uh, forest stand management. Um, so we can get a little bit of support for that work. Um, and hopefully, you know, pay, pay for the, the, all of the activities. Um, it's right now just hiring a, a private logger to come out and do that work without that support, um, is financially not possible for us.
So the parcel is, uh, 19 acres, and you're talking about the west part of it, you know, or sorry, the east part of it.
Eastern part. Yeah.
I mean, obviously Craig brings up the concern we have for the Skidnack Valley well that's on the Lauderbaum property, but we also have a public water supply well on our property that supplies the school. And that's the reason we actually bought that parcel from Bill Bureau, uh, 20 something years ago. So I think the herbicide part that Craig talks about is important to us.
I, I don't...
Of course, your management, honestly, you guys are better at that. Yeah, right. You know, if you need an easement from the town to do the, the pine tree management, and you're also a conservation that, you know, you're not, I don't know if you need a, uh, you know, not required type thing or something like that from them, you can handle it.
A forest cutting plan would be what would be needed. You know, that would be reviewed by the Conservation Commission.
Right. You know the process through that. I think, uh, none of us have an opposition to maintaining, I mean, it presented, uh, it takes care of any fire danger. It allows you to take care of any dead trees, stuff like that. I think we're all in favor of that type of thing.
I, I, I don't want to say, I, I'm sorry that I brought the herbicide question up because I didn't, we would not be using herbicides in, in any area. We would not be proposing or thinking about herbicides in an area that's a public drinking water supply. Um, so, you know, we are considering herbicide use in other sections of the property. You know, I, I wanted to give you that, the whole, sort of that big picture, but no.
Me too, though, because the way the, the aquifer plumes go are they're coming from, from north to south pretty much. So if you're doing them up there, it's gonna drift down.
Well, yes and no. I think there, what's important is the choice of chemical, and a lot of these herbicides, um, tightly bind to soil. And so they don't move once you've applied them. Also, the, the method of application, these cut stem treatments that we'd largely be doing on these shrubs, um, it's a direct, you know, direct contact with the, with the freshly cut surface of the plant, and there's really no, no chemical like...
This isn't something permeating into soil, you're saying? It's not a permeating type thing into the groundwater?
Right, that's right. It...
A topical application?
Right. And to the extent that it, it, any contacts the soil, it binds with the soil and then gets broken down through, um, you know, microbial processes. So there's, there's some herbicides that do, that have the, have the capability of leaching into, you know, groundwater aquifers and get into wells. And I'm super sensitive to that. We would never be proposing the use of an herbicide, you know, that, that had that potential in this sensitive area.
In the application of it, you're saying you're not just spraying it like they used to do in the, uh, right, rights away for the utility companies. You're, you're, it's more, more, uh, specific application?
If you ever, if you ever played bingo, and you, if you're familiar with those dot stampers, basically they make something like that called a...
Are you making, are you making reference to my age?
No.
That is problematic. You know what you're talking about. You got the gobbers.
I know what it is.
Twenty of them in front of me.
But there's, there's something called a buckthorn blaster that's basically that dot kind of tool, only you fill it with herbicide.
So you cut, you cut the stem and you hit it with a bingo dot blaster?
You cut the stem, you dot it, you dot it with that, and it's like, there's virtually no, no herbicide.
Yeah, yeah.
Is, right. It just, it hits the stem, it just stays there. You, you, you have a little, a little dye that marks it as, as, oh, I, I treated that one, and that's it. You're done. Um, on, on the cambium.
You're sorry you opened that door, aren't you?
I, I didn't, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be doing any herbicide treatment in, in a public drinking water supply area, you know, and I, and I do appreciate that, you know, Big Brook comes down and, you know, the water is gonna be passing by the wells. Um, you know, and I'll, and all I can say is, you know, farther up, the only herbicide we would be proposing would be material that binds with the soil.
What's the name of the herb, what's the name of the herbicide?
Um, I think that the herbicide that doesn't leach is, is glyphosate. And I know a lot of people are upset about glyphosate use, but one of its primary, uh, benefits is that it binds to soil.
Okay. And you'll give us notification when you're gonna do that application, if you do it?
This is, again, this is all conceptual. So yes, anything, you know, that we do, you know, certainly it would require Conservation Commission review in or near wetlands or within 200 feet of the brook. Um, but we're really, we're just trying to get our hands around this now conceptually and trying to understand, you know, what the town might, might think is okay to do and so forth, because a lot of this invasive plant, you know, invasive plants don't, uh...
Go away.
They don't go away and they don't follow property lines.
Yeah.
Um, so if we, if we just deal with the stuff that's on our property and leave your, you know, the adjacent property untreated, then we just have, you know, a seed source and, and a spread, you know, spreading source that doesn't really fully solve the problem. So that's, that's why we're looking at this really at all, is that we're trying to, you know, treat this on a more comprehensive manner.
Yeah. Jonah, so what do you need from us?
Basically, what John said, I mean, if that's, if that's the case, that you're all in agreement that the forest management is, would be okay for us to do, I think that's the main thing for us to know at this point. We, we're not gonna, we're not gonna go out and cut tomorrow. Like Tom said, we have many steps to go. So I think what would happen next is we're gonna look for funding, we're gonna apply for funding. If we can get it, then we'd come back to you and talk about the details of what, what type of agreement we want to have.
I think conceptually, I mean, like you said, it has to go through Conservation Commission, you know, after us anyway. So they don't want more of the questions and concerns to raise.
And, and I think, you know, uh, you know, speaking from experience, people don't like a lot of change, especially in, in around, you know, forest management and cutting trees. Um, it can often be, you know, a sensitive issue. And so we, you know, we try to, um, you know, hold pub site walks and, and, you know, a meeting at the library and, you know, in communities that where we've done this kind of work before. Um, we do try to make it an effort at, at public outreach to just, you know, as we're, as we're sort of developing the concepts and kind of getting more confident that it's gonna happen, um, we do, you know, put a, put a, a, an press release and so forth to try to, um, solicit opinions before anything's really happening and to understand, you know, feedback and sensitivity.
To your point, I think, you know, the forest management is key. That's especially, you know, now with the wet year we've had, where we are now, you know, everything's rotting and falling down. We are one dry summer away from a, a bad event happening. So
Yeah.
Definitely, definitely needed.
And, and, you know, for me, like every time I go down there, it's like, wow, you know, there's a lot of dead wood hanging above our trails and, um, you know, we, we're trying to be responsible about, about closing the sanctuary when we feel like there's a, there's a major risk.
One, one note about that too. We did change since last time I came, we are now, um, closing the trails and not the sanctuary so that people can still come in and enjoy the picnic area and go next to the pond because the hazard is not there. The hazard's once you go into the woods. Um, so we were closing it at the gate, which we realized was not necessary. So now we're leaving the gate open and just close, putting a sign at the trail, uh, at the bridge there going into the woods. So folks can still come in and enjoy the entry area there.
Okay.
Couple of other questions. Uh, I know there's a MVP thing happening tomorrow. Where does that happen? At your property? Is it out in the parking lot? Is it?
In the parking lot area. Yeah.
So just stand around and...
Be a fly in the wall.
Basically, that's it.
Fly the tree.
I think they're looking for community input. So that, I think that, you know, this is run by the Conway School of Landscape Design. And so, you know, they, they have a, they're required as a part of their graduate program to run community engagement programs. And, and so they're gonna be having, they're gonna be looking for you to be involved with input on, on, and we're gonna be there. So we'll see you in person there if you're there.
Uh, the other question, did John, was looking for some help, uh, contact?
We have, um, a water project going on, which is gonna require some, um, changes to the, um, pump station and wells on the, the property over there. We need a contact person to get ahold of, just for notice of intent and stuff. Do you have any names you can email us of somebody we can get in contact with for the property?
Uh, with, with Mass Audubon? With us?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, you can send that to me and I will get it to the right, I can get it to the right folks, uh, depending on what's needed. Yeah. And John, John has my email. Um, yeah.
Lauren, you do too, I think, right?
All right. Good. We're good. All right.
Thank you. Yeah. Great. Thanks for your time. Yep.
Appreciate it. Be well.
Okay. Uh, next item on our agenda is please, uh, purchase of pistols, but that's off the agenda because the, uh, Advisory Committee is not recommending that for this, this time around.
I would also make a point that I think, uh, we could do, we could recommend to, if they can really validate the fact that it's a, uh, a need. They do have plenty of money in that op duty account, which they've used in the past for the cruiser purchase.
Is there sufficient funds in there, you think?
Well, there's 60 to 70 in it right now, and I think he was up for 20, right?
20, yeah.
Yeah. Oh my gosh, with all the work at the intersection, that's probably going up, you know, thousands every week.
There's a lot of guys out there.
Guys out there, I'm sure.
Uh, next item is just, uh, we had received notification, official notification of the Hampton Wilberham Regional School District Assessment Letter. The town's assessment for, uh, 2025 is $8,813,481. And also the, they also, uh, have an article for capital expenditure for, um, uh, wireless access points. And our town shares 43,279. So that's just official notification of that. Dispatch.
And Don, you made the point before, that's going, the regional agreement shows a different calculation on the Minutog capital needs, correct?
Right.
And they're adhering to that now, right?
Right, they're adhering to that. The calculation is, in the past, we were based on the total number of students, but the, the contract says the calculation would be on the number of Hampton students in, actually in Minutog, as opposed to the number of Wilberham students, not the whole student population. So it's a little, it's a little bit different, about about half a, half a percentage point to our benefit. And the other thing is that I always have been questioning is, is that we've been paying eight times a year and the contract says we should pay four times a year. And I talked to the treasurer and he's amiable to, you know, they just started doing that as a, uh, but I thought maybe if we kept the money in a little bit longer, we could get some interest on it. So that's...
I know Dick said it came, that started before him.
Yeah, yeah, 18 years ago it started. So, all right, dispatch. There we go. Hi, Tony.
I'm here. Hello.
Hey, Tony.
I haven't seen you in a while, so I decided to come in person.
Thanks. Good to see you.
Yes.
Got that map and everything?
This is, I brought this, it just looks like, it's just blank paper, so I look up.
You got the shirt. We don't even have a shirt.
You should. Want me to buy you some?
$150.
What's the deal?
What do you want to know? Did you get a copy of that?
I have a copy. Uh, so first line, you gotta change your date there. You got 23, it should be 24, I think.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, yeah. I'll, I'll leave that. Do you have a pen or paper? Thank you. So this was done up by, I think, the Wilberham, the Belch Town and the Wilberham Town Council, I don't even, we're council attorneys. So I'll tell them about that. I'm sure they...
The bill costs $50. You tell them.
That's all right. I got it.
All right. Uh, one, number one. Right? Agreement says number one. So the preamble's fine, in my opinion. Down the agreement, one says state agency approval for Belcher Town. Should it say after executing this agreement, Belcher Town, uh, Hampton and Wilberham shall forthwith apply? Are we applying together or are you just applying? It says Belcher Town and Wilberham will apply, but should Hampton be in there too?
Uh, since we're already a PSAP, a combined PSAP, we just would have to apply to get them. I've already got the okay from the state anyway. So that's not, that's, that's pretty much moved. So we would just notify the state that, uh, what we're doing, they already know.
Expanding the PSAP.
Correct, expanding the PSAP. So Hampton doesn't have to because they already have. So we would just be adding Belcher Town on it. But I see what you're saying where it would throw you off.
How is the PSAP technically listed as a, as a number? How is the PSAP technically listed as a, as a number Wilberham or is it listed Wilberham Hamden?
Uh, the PSAP is listed Wilberham Regional. So if anybody says I need Hamden, it comes to us, obviously.
Okay, uh, under executive board?
Yep.
Quorum and quanum. This is just a, I think this says majority of four of the six voting members, except for comes to the quorum, alright? However, in the event of a minimum quorum of four, the affirmative vote of all four members present being majority, right? This is being a majority of all six, okay, shall be required. When, when the full six are there, four, right? Should there be a number, should there, there be, it says, if there's five, you still need four?
I would assume so, yeah. So are you, uh, marking these down? Cause I think I'll have to have, if you wanna bring it to Nick and let Nick know, but I'll definitely mark them down.
I'll give it to Brian.
Yeah, exact, yeah, perfect.
Alright, what else I got here?
I think there's a provision here that says that, uh, we're actually gonna pay you. No, I'm kidding.
I, I actually put that in a sense of order.
You better find it.
Okay, now here's the, and, do you have the old one with you?
Yeah.
This is a number fee for service. So I need to figure this out here, we need to figure this out. Fee for service.
Does this fall the same model that we presented or we were?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Three was, three was free.
Then, then four, five, six is the same?
Yeah, everything's the same. If you see, if you look in, um, to, to answer your question, if you look at one A.
Yep.
We're just, uh.
Addition?
Yeah, it says anything that, sure, it says there any, any receipt of state aid, Wilberham Hamden shall be deemed to include Belgium on all rights and obligation, Hamden shall be deemed the right to an obligation, Belcher Town.
Yep.
Okay, so, um, where was I? No, so on fee for service. Fee for service. So on, on the old one, it says for each fiscal year, okay, for Hamden, the fee shall be a fixed hundred twenty-five thousand per year. And the full, uh, shall be pre- pre- rated by the municipal fiscal year, okay? And, and that the fee for thirty-six months of the operational day will be paid in full by the state grant by Wilberham. This is the fee will be paid by Hamden for a subsequent period of times. But that's, the state is paying fifty percent and twenty-five percent. So that's, that's, if you look at the new one, they break, they, they break it out.
Yeah.
So I don't know if we need to.
Year one, two, three, four, fifty, yeah. Okay.
So we're what, going into year four now?
You're going into year four, so it would be.
Fifty percent.
Right, correct, yeah.
Fifty percent.
Yeah, and I would do that at the last two quarters, the first two quarters, I will have the state pay and then, just so you know what's coming up, the last two quarters I would get it from, and then the last time, the first quarter, we'll get it from the state.
Is there any chance with this new grant round will go?
There's always a chance, there's always a chance. And I will definitely, I will definitely, I know that was one of your big points.
Well, that's, basically, the two fifty and the, the one twenty-five is a calculation of your expenses. Are you gonna have a chance pay it after the first year with Belcher Town and said, you know, I looked at a whole budget, but I hired a couple of new people. But we're actually running this a little tighter than we thought, our expenses low and.
So I did some calculations, um, when I hired three new people and our total budget is about one point three million dollars, that's all in. Um, after the support incentive grant, we'll probably, we'll probably get about six hundred sixty thousand dollars from the state for the support incentive grant. And the remainder would be the operating costs that the town would, of Wilberham would, um, coming on. Uh, I did some calculations with population and calls for service for each community. And, um, Wilberham came up the highest with about almost three hundred thousand dollars at there and for. Hamden was just under a hundred twenty-five and Belcher Town was just at two hundred fifty thousand. So I think where we are now is good, but there is also possibility where, alright, you know what, you did ten percent more nine-one-one calls this year, you're gonna get ten percent more of that six hundred sixty thousand and it might, you know, it might bump us up and might bump us up to another category. But I think when we have three PSAPs, we're in a higher tier to be able to obtain grant fundings easier and more. So that will work out for.
I mean, that was your thing two, three years ago, the fact that you're saying the state wants you to.
They do.
Merge up. And I always use that raindrop analogy.
Yep.
They want the little ones to become one bigger raindrop.
Yep.
I think Don asked you last time, we talked about this, where would you go next? And your point was, I think, you're so mobile, you don't have to be contiguous.
Correct.
You don't wanna pick up now, you don't wanna pick up Holyoke.
No.
But you also, other smaller towns are looking for this type of service.
Yes, first.
Is there a sweet spot?
Nah, I mean, I think we're, we're good at two. I mean, I don't, I have an issue with two. I think three makes us competitive, very competitive. And if we were to get bigger, I wouldn't do anything until after three fiscal years with Belcher Town, yeah. Uh, there's talk of if we do get bigger, we're gonna need a new building, whether that building's in Hamden, Wilberham, Belcher Town, wherever. Um, we could reuse a town building that one of the communities owns, the state may pay to have it revamped. So you have a building that I can have.
But if the state comes back and says, you know what, if you were a four-town PSAP, we would cover a hundred percent for the next three years.
That'd be great.
You'd be hard pressed to say no.
I would be hard pressed to say no, yes. But one of the things I look for is I, the first thing, if I don't go out looking for communities to come into us, they will ask us. I've already turned away one community, they said, not, not right now. A lot of different factors, but, uh, Belcher Town came in, I like to keep it, I, I wanna keep our regional center, what's the word I'm looking for, smaller community-based, whereas some other centers have large cities or larger municipalities. I don't really wanna, I, I don't wanna do that. I wanna keep it.
Yeah, all three communities are kind of relatively.
Exactly, yes. I, I wanna keep the, you know, Belcher Town's huge landmass wise, but it's a small town feel, just like Hamden, small town feel. Wilberham, kinda same thing, but with Boston Road. But that's how I wanna keep it. I wanna keep it like that. I don't want a big municipality asking. Yeah, that's the way I would keep it. But yes, I will definitely ask the state if we can at least do one more year at a hundred percent, if not maybe three more. And, you know, they could say, you know what?
All they can say is no.
Yeah, all they can say is no, yeah. And we already know what's coming. And if they say no, then they say no. But that doesn't mean that we can't use some grant funding to enhance some of Hamden's infrastructure.
When is, when is Belcher Town proposal going in effect and when would you know about funding from the state?
So, um, the development grant I already turned in, I turned that in, um, with the thought that Belcher Town was coming on. We don't have any, obviously don't have the IMA signed yet. Um, I put in for, um, additional funds for additional dispatchers, uh, they need their radio, uh, infrastructure upgraded. And a couple of other things I put in there for smaller things. I think there's some type of radio upgrade as well to make all of our radio systems combined to be linked as one. So if Hamden's radio system goes down, now I can use state grant funding to repair it because it is a regional system, it's a linked system.
You would never go to a, a talk group like some of the other places do?
So there has been talk about using the state's eight hundred system to, um, put police and fire for each communities on there. Each community would have their own talk group or two, you know, two for police, two for fire. So there has been some talk about that, that doesn't, I don't think that's coming anytime soon, but what that might have, what that might do is we would just, uh, rent out their radio system. And then anything that happens to it, they deal with it. We, we, we don't have to pay anything extra. There's no service fee or anything. We just pay a certain amount a month to the Commonwealth.
Would that put all three of these communities on the same frequency then, kinda like?
It would be on that state's, uh, trunk system.
Kinda like when you listen to like Wilberham, Muncie, uh, Muncie, East Long Beach.
Right. It would be on the same talk group. I wouldn't put the police departments on the same, no, they, everybody would be separate. That's the way I want, I, I don't, I don't think that we should be putting two communities, police departments on the same talk group or frequency because, you know, something could happen with one and the other doesn't know and.
Right.
So I, I like the way we have it now. Each community has their own radio system, but they're gonna be linked together up on our Ridge Road. So they're actually just one. And I'm gonna have Hamden pay for that.
Now, isn't there state property up in Belcher Town? Does that mean you have interaction more with the state police or?
So there's a state police barracks, C seven, which is in, uh, Quabbin. Uh, we could already talk directly to them right on their, one of their, um, uh, talk groups, LPS seven, it's like the Wimlac for central mass. So we already have that on our consoles right now. It's actually in the console in Hamden too, because the console of Hamden PD is a mirror or a sister of the ones that we have up in our dispatch center.
And I hear you're bringing us some fiber too.
Yes, I talked to the contractor today. They're starting the end of this week or early next week. So it's gonna link the police department in Hamden to the town hall, to the fire department. It's a twenty-fourth strand from the, uh, police station, twelve will come here and twelve to the, uh, fire station in Hamden. The nets link back.
Put it on the new poles, please, not on the old.
They are.
I mean, Don will check that out later.
We're gonna put everything on the new poles, actually that same company's coming at the same time to move the fiber to the new poles.
And just for clarification, that's not internet, that's strictly.
No, I know.
Dark, dark, public safety, yeah, yeah. But, uh, what I plan on doing next fiscal year is adding, unless I have some money left over, uh, I wanna put a couple of cameras at the fire station. Uh, one maybe in the bay or wherever, just for security purposes, one outside. And I do wanna put a phone outside of the, uh, door at the fire station, just in case there's a medical emergency there and there's no uh, staff on duty, they can push the button or pick the phone up and it calls nine-one-one, uh.
No, I don't wanna push, cause I mean, obviously you're here, we can't offer you cookies if you wanna bribe you a little bit, but.
I love cookies.
We have the highway department right next door.
Yeah.
What would it take for you to make a drop to the highway department?
I mean, when they come up here, we can ask them. Or I can just get it done later in the year. It's not, it's not a huge, it's not a big hop, right?
It's just right at the road.
Yeah.
Right.
Main street.
If you go out to the parking lot, you can throw a rock and hit the building.
Well, what if we did twelve strands here, ten strands at the fire station and two at the highway department?
I mean, you're, you're the technical guy there.
I'm really not. I can add and subtract, so that's pretty much all I can do. I can't divide. But yeah, yeah, I, I don't see a problem. Or we just take twenty-four strands from where they break it off here and then just put it over there.
Sure.
I mean, that's not a far.
Right, no, no, just a thought.
And money's no object, so. Okay.
Let me check.
So I wanna, I wanna, I wanna do something with that, uh, the fee for service thing, just.
Okay.
I, I, I don't know what though. So maybe I'll sit with, uh, Brian, because I just wanna, I just wanna get clarified that, somehow to clarify that.
It's the same for us too, as it is for them.
Yeah, you know what I mean?
Oh, you mean, you wanna make sure that it's the same hundred percent for the three years, fifty and twenty-five?
Yeah.
Okay. That's actually in the development grant rules or guidelines. So, I mean, I can give you a copy of that if you want.
I mean, it's, it's called out here, but not in the original.
Yeah, yeah, so, okay. So maybe add that as well, yeah.
The verbage should mirror.
Yeah. That's all I got.
So when do you need action from us? After Don goes through his review, when then we'll?
Yeah, I mean, the sooner the better for the IMA to be signed by all communities. I think Belcher Town's good with, uh, and they sent it to Wilberham, Wilberham did theirs and they sent it to you for, for Hamden to look at. But if, yeah, if you have those revisions, I mean.
Okay, well, Brian, we'll sit tomorrow, okay?
Um, yeah, um.
In the parking lot, left as well.
Yeah. That's it?
We're good.
Anything else?
Thanks for stopping by.
Thank you for having me.
Any info, any memo up on Zella?
So I spoke with their, um, person that does that. He saw the request that I sent to them and he's gonna work on it in the next few days. So hopefully soon.
Should be good to go soon.
Yeah. But yeah, no, everything, everything's good. We appreciate you, uh, coming to us, we appreciate it.
Still waiting for my radio, but that's it.
Yeah, I'll get you one soon. Maybe with this next round of grants, then we can get you one. Then we'll get Don one too.
I don't even answer my phone, I'm not gonna answer the radio.
Yeah, you will, if I call you, you will.
And you did offer him cookies, John, so now you gotta fill out.
That's right, well, they're right over there.
I see, there you go.
Nice shirt.
Thank you.
I think our Slackman should have those, don't you think?
I think so, I don't know, I might buy them, but that'd be less than fifty dollars.
Cemetery. See ya. Cemetery commissioners, thanks for coming down. People are dying to get in there.
Tell them, yeah. Thank you.
Well, you have fencer on, cemetery, we're going to get out. So, and the reason I wanna get together here is we're getting to the end of your terms. And, uh, are you, and no one signed up to run? And does anyone have any intention of being written in?
I do not. I can't.
I know you're very busy.
Congratulations, by the way, on the Hartspring thing.
Thank you.
Yeah, look at your front center.
Like it.
Job there.
I, I'm on two committees.
Yeah.
The senior center and the library. And plus my responsibilities at home are keeping me there longer. So I can't.
That's separate, Hartspring's a job, right?
Yeah, yep. But in the meantime, um, I mean, if anybody comes in, I certainly can come in and help them. That isn't the problem. I, and, did you find a job post, Brian, for clerk? That's right. I asked him if there was one. We desperately need a clerk. Hopefully, would be nice that they came in before my term ended here.
Two weeks.
Uh-huh, three, four, about four, after voting time. I don't know, um, if that's what we're gonna have to do. I don't know any other internal, never mind. We need another commissioner just for voting purposes and to get things done.
Yeah. What say you?
I, um, I signed up for this to get us to this point. And my goal was to make sure that the families that had members that they wished to have buried and make sure that at the cemetery end of it, which I've been pretty, pretty happy with the result. We, we basically have, as a cemetery commission history, it appears that we have about two and a half burials a month average, for about twenty-eight a year is what the high number was for the last year. And, um, we're pretty much by the end of May, we're gonna have ten completed from April and May. So that's been very, very active.
Busy.
Um, a lot, a lot of phone activity, Joan's taking a lot of calls. Some of them, um, are people that are looking for answers that maybe we don't have answers for yet or don't understand. You guys had Tim Connors here for, I think, nine years, he said. And in the end, they did a pretty phenomenal job based upon what we've got. So, uh, you know, it's been good to see. And, um.
And at that funeral homes are still calling him because they don't know any difference. Right, and when I, I did come in this morning and there was a phone message from yesterday morning, Byron Funeral, uh, Forestry, sorry. And they want a burial for Thursday, excuse me. So I called Emily, the funeral director and who I know and have worked with. And I said, give me the names, the, you know, the information. She didn't leave that on the phone. So she did. And I tried locating on our maps through the Sims program that we have. And I couldn't find any name pertaining to. So, um, in the meantime, Thursday, they wanted it. So I called Billy Bunt. Apparently, Dwayne and Billy had some difficulty and he hung up on you. And he told me he wasn't going to do them anymore. He was done. Um, I guess if you need to talk to Billy, you can ask him. But I said, I may have a burial, full burial up at Old Cemetery Thursday. So he said, I'll meet you up there. I says, well, I'm trying to find the plot. He said, we'll just come up. I probably know the family, which is true. He knows everybody in town. He knows every stone. He knows right where they were. Sure enough, he knew. And he told me the situation and the names I had. And he told me how they fit in, the one that, that funeral director gave me. And how they fit in with what he knew. And there's the stone. They had told me where she wanted to be buried. So we lined it out and he's going to dig it for me tomorrow. He says, I'll dig it for you. However, we wanna take that. So, so I said, well, I'm right here.
Was that a threat or?
I know, man, don't throw me in.
So is that his last one or is, or, or he didn't?
He's doing it. I didn't ask any questions. He's, he's gonna be in there excavating, uh, tomorrow.
Okay.
So it'll be ready for Thursday. But we desperately need another commissioner to get a few things ironed out. Um, we have a couple of calls, uh, town people. Uh, one fellow works for the highway department and the, the groundskeeper has totally ruined a whole corner of his stone. Now, can we just tell him, do you go, you go to the granite company? Or how, I don't, we don't know what to do next on these situations. Uh, pardon me?
The, the person that was hired to do it?
Yeah, probably.
Because you mentioned the highway department. They, I don't think they, they don't mow in there.
No, it's highway department's stone.
Oh, okay, okay.
Sunstone. And the, apparently in mowing and we went up, look, sure enough, the whole, it's cut right up, part of the problem.
But who, who hires the people to do the co- cutting at the cemetery?
Well, the commissioners.
Commissioners.
So.
And he's, they're, they're up for, um, renewal in July.
So you're gonna go back to that company you hired and say, look, you did some damage, you need to make it right.
So they have to do that. That's what I, we, that's where we're coming from. We don't know who to go to.
Well, we got two issues there. Because for years, the highway department maintained. Well, we got two issues there. Because for years, the highway department maintained that. And that stone has been there since two thousand and ten. And so, we don't know how long this company has been contracted. And if it happened after or before.
We don't know when it happened. I think it's pretty recent.
I'll remember, if the damage are recent, cemetery has been in charge of hiring that workout for, I would think, at least that long. Because it happened while I was early on the board. The cemetery commissioners at that time, which predates the Connors, wanted control of going out. They said they could do a better job than the.
Is that how it got taken away from the highway?
Yes, and highway agreed with it. Look, they didn't have time. They were cut down to, I think, maybe even three guys at that time. And they said, look, you guys want to pay for it out of your budget? And I said, the commission, that was fine. So it does seem like if they're people that you're paying for, you go back to them and say, look.
Okay.
There must be insurance. They must have a rider of some sort.
You hope they're bonded, because I mean, they're dealing with a lot of stuff.
And unfortunately, this particular stone is sitting right next to another stone like this here. And this one is sticking up in the air versus, you know.
They're supposed to be flat to the ground, so the mowers can go right over. But they're lifting up with the erosion in the soil. And apparently, he's still mowing right over them. So, from there, the, the stone has got to be lowered again. So who does that? Lower it for mowing, et cetera.
Was that part of maintenance at the cemetery, perpetual care and stuff like that? Yeah.
So that would be the groundskeeper.
Well, it seems like it'd be under your charge, like you might job it out and say, I need to hire so-and-so. Stones are us and they go out and they level it.
We have, in the past, Mary Hatch used to do the stones and the foundations and the cremations. And Carl has picked that up and he has been doing a phenomenal job. We had six foundations that he's put in this past month or so. And also, we've had six cremations by the end of May. So it's been fairly active. And uh, I'm very impressed with, you know, the support we're getting there in the quality of that work. So uh.
Yeah, the, and the, when you talk about the maintenance, the apparently before, before you folks were on the board, the maintenance was being taken out of the revolving account. If you look at the cemetery maintenance, you have twenty thousand five hundred dollars. And nothing's been expended in that since July. But about seventeen thousand, uh, but, but the money's been taken out of the revolving account, which is only for burial and uh, burial expenses. And maintenance, because of the maintenance account, nothing's been taken out of there. So I guess I'm, I'm just thinking he's going to be coming to mow pretty soon. So we want to make sure of that. And I've talked to the accountant about it and he's going to readjust that. He's going to get it squared away. And for the past, what's come out of the, the revolving account is the digging, the digging in the grave. Paying the commissioners if they attend the, you know, attend the, and that kind of stuff. But, but the maintenance got to come out, so. Cliff's, Cliff's got to straighten that out.
So what comes out of perpetual care? Now, what's their, there's a restriction on that.
Perpetual care is whatever, I think perpetual care is whatever the people, the people are paid for that themselves, right? Perpetual care.
See, there's so many.
That's just for that big one, right? The perpetual care. No, there's, there's um, a, a plot there where somebody donated revenues to the cemetery to be used for certain things only. And I might think it's maintenance and cleanup. I don't know the name of the individuals, but. There was, there was like a legacy account.
Something about that.
Right, it was a legacy account.
You know, the, there's so many spokes in this wheel. It looks like a simple project. Yet this, this thing has so many things. And like when we receive a cremation, we also receive a certificate. Not sure what to do with that certificate yet. The Sims um, is, is an interesting program. And some of it is very accurate and some of it, because of the different families, you know, the, the names are different. But um, sometimes, for example, we just had one that we were told it was going to happen in a, a particular family. It turns out it's in a, a different family. And the spelling of it was incorrect. So it was the same situation.
Very tricky.
Perpetual care, see, yeah. You're allowed to expend only like the interest on the basis.
That's the interest one, yeah. Okay, yeah.
And then there's the, I believe that's also a separate fund.
That's the one I was thinking of.
And perpetual care's got, you know, almost eighty grand in it, of which you expend the interest or something like that.
And then I have another stone belongs to Dana Pipsley's family. And it's literal, well, it's on the hill that faces um, what's her name? Philpott, that's right. The hill there. And the stone has literally rode right off the foundation. It's moving right down the hill. So Dana asked if that could be fixed. Well, I'm up there walking around with him. And the whole hill is gravel, uh, rain. It's washing everything down the hill and it's washing that stone right down with it. So I said to Dana, it doesn't even look like there's pins in the stone that hold it to the, to the platform.
Now, that water problem was something that was addressed, might be before your time, but there was a problem with the people who bought Dalton's house.
Yeah, they put a berm there.
Something about that. And they were trying to try and take care of that, that water issue. Coming down, they were going to pick it up at the, at the road that came around, so it wouldn't go through all those stones and come down hitting their, beside their property.
Yeah, I, I don't know if that's the area, because last year, the cemetery commission put in the budget fifty-five hundred dollars for erosion.
Right.
And I wonder if that's the area that they were going to do.
And never got done. So that stone now, again, I, we would have to hire somebody to come in and fix it.
You know, that, that would be resetting, I shouldn't say resetting, installing a new foundation significantly deeper than the previous one. That particular stone that Joan is referring to, it was probably turned, put in in the early two thousands.
So it's at a three foot deep?
And so, you know, it, it was just a small slab under it. So um.
That's just some of the newer stones. I mean, then you have some of the older stones too that are.
Oh, yeah, they're just sitting there.
In rough shape, yeah.
Also, for the. Also for the old cemetery, um, when the Tea Party folks were here, they indicated that there was a grant. And so, I got asked Bob when he was here and I think that he passed it along to Brian that um, you know, where, where to go or something like that. But you know, that has, you know, that's another step that'll help up for the old cemetery, but it won't do anything if it's specked ill. And um.
I've answered lots of phone calls, angry issues with the cemetery being closed. And we were just beginning to visit it and revisit it and with the third commissioner and she's gone. Uh, I can't tell you how many angry people. For one, it's, uh, I can understand where they're coming from. It's a hefty expense if it's a full burial. They have to pay vault fees. There's only two, three cemeteries that you can ho- have in holding. And the, the one big complainer was his, his grandmother died two days after the cemetery closed. So he had to pay from that date until we opened about eighteen hundred. They weren't happy. They were, they begged to have something done. And he's the one that.
But don't they close most cemeteries for the winter?
Nobody does.
But Hampton has had a history. I was talking to somebody that had done burials up there years before. And he said it up until about four, five years ago, he said, when he was doing them, that they always closed. And he said November to April.
But weather's different now, I think. And Billy said he'd keep it open. He knows how to handle it. You just hope that the public is.
Yeah, we haven't seen a freeze in a number of years now, really.
Right, we don't have that anymore. So that's what I was looking at, just because, not that I can see many, but what happens now. They're all piling up, I'm sure, right?
It's still hard with a part-time department though. Like you say, entering the phone, now you don't have a clerk anymore.
We don't. And this is difficult. And of course, the calls, they'll call back and they'll punch any extension until.
Somebody answers.
Somebody answers. And it's Eva or Jane. And that's what's happening. Um, I don't know how to get around that. I suggested, um, I, I did change the voice message because since a, a few days, there were two or three calls. They were complaining because they did not want to speak with the previous clerk. Why is her name still in there? I don't want to talk to her, I think, oh brother. So I kind of just allude to it and I'll call. But I did change the phone message. Um, so when they call, they don't get a name. They just say, but there is no backup. So when you get the funeral home calling and they're given maybe three days, they need a burial. And I just happened to come in today. I mean, it's like we have no schedule. So how do we? And apparently, um, Tim Connors, I think, was a commissioner. And he must have had a phone at home or he had a, a phone, the message must have said, call him at home.
Well, I wonder if there's auto forwarding on some of these uh, phones here. I know.
It probably is. It probably, but who's going to take it?
No, I'm saying if they call the extension there, will it auto forward that message as well?
Right.
You know, these are VoIP phones, so I imagine they've got some of those capabilities in there.
But who would you forward it to?
Well, it's for you guys to decide.
Oh, we have to decide that. But with no clerk, then what?
So, so May twentieth is coming. You're going to be gone.
I can't.
Okay.
Yeah, I will stay on, um, you know, to help transition whatever and keep looking for somebody to be more permanent.
And the other option is we could, we could, we could write ourselves.
You could write yourself, yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah, you could, you could hold as many elected positions.
Appointing ourselves would have been.
Appoint you, you can't. But elected, we could. We could write, we could do a writing.
What's going to happen after May twentieth? Um, who's going to be there? Again, you're going to be.
And then if people, and then if people said, you know, I'd like to be on the board, they can always come. One of us would resign and appoint that person.
And you know, right now.
Just have a full board, you know?
Yeah.
Right now, I, I think I'm averaging more than five hours a week in fall with my.
Oh, I did more than that. Last week alone, I was in here every morning.
And that may be something to look at in terms of your clerical budget in the future as well. Maybe five hours wasn't even.
I even asked my granddaughter, I'm not kidding, because she's um, out of college. She has a degree in philosophy. And she's in the army, she's flying helicopters, but she's reserved. So she has one weekend a month and one day flying out of Windsor Lax. I said, Grayson, why not, want a job being a clerk? You know, and she can't, she can't really grab anything full-time. So if I, if I ask her again, I'll see, but.
You didn't get the no, though.
I'm not gonna, pardon me?
You didn't get the no.
No, I'm not yet.
Well, and my concern too is that as a temporary, I don't feel that they should be filling the position permanently for, for whomever takes over. Um, and you know, they may have a different style, may have a different personality. And um, so I think it's important that they, they have control of the board as it, as it comes in. We could go full steam ahead and it could fall apart in a month.
Well, there are a lot to think about here. I have to tell you how much we appreciate you guys stepping up and doing this. And I really never thought there was that much work.
I didn't think so either. That's why I agreed to it.
And whoever comes in is going to have to know the computer system. I mean, I got into the SIM system and I navigate around it. Today, I was doing everything trying to find a name. So the more you use it, the easier it is. But you know, it's not something I've ever used.
So you need a clerk.
Well, that's it, so. So where does that get posted on our?
I don't know, Brian, did you repost the clerk?
We didn't have to last time.
Right, but now that we have the opening, have we reposted it on the job, uh, the job on the town website under openings?
Oh, we haven't, we haven't reposted anything yet.
And then of course Dalton's listening and he wants to put that in the paper as soon as possible, I can see.
Anything else?
I have nothing.
We, we talked about the contracts.
Yeah.
Now.
Oh yeah, that contract's coming up, right?
Yes. Now, do we have the authority to, or you folks, the, that gets signed, has to go through you folks?
No, the cemetery commission.
Yeah, and they did for the plowing used to be in back in the day too. They're an elected board, they entered into the wrong contract.
Okay, question, speaking of that, what contracts?
Run it through Brian to make sure it complies with all thirty B requirements.
The procurement and all that stuff, you know.
What contracts exist today?
I have no idea.
There was a, there, I'm not sure. We had landscaping, there was a plowing at one time, but I think that folded back into the highway when they got.
I think highway still does the plowing.
They got the extra small truck to do it.
Well, we're being billed for plowing. I, I've seen some bills for that, so, but um, and um, we mentioned the grant.
Yeah, Bill plows.
So. And then, is there anything legal going on that we should be sensitive to? Any, any lawsuits or anything going on?
For the cemetery?
Okay. That's good to know.
Not yet.
No, I don't think so.
All right.
And they, but does the water commission use the office also? I s- the cabinets are in there, oh.
That's it. Just the file cabinet.
Just that, that.
That's it.
And you can get in there, okay?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I have a key for that.
Okay.
Good. All right, all right, thank you guys. Carry on.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
You bet.
Main Street Bridge.
Yeah, I actually have this put on just because I wanted to see if we really had a good understanding of our direction was happening here. Uh, we've been dealing with this, gosh darn, for three years. You know, between one grant and another vulnerability part. And we have three bridge projects in town. We have the Rockinundy Bridge, which has a seventy-person meeting every two weeks, it seems like. We got the South Road Bridge over Ballard Brook, I believe, which the state is also taking care of with their small bridge program. And taking care of the whole thing, besides a, a short number. And then we have this bridge here. As Mark said, the state has told us it does need some repair. The state has never said it needs a replacement. As Mark talked about when he came to our meeting and talked about the outer beams and put the uh, the cones there, the outer beams need fixing. We have a proposed budget here of two and a, almost two and a half million dollars to replace the bridge. And the impetus for replacing it is because of the potential for flooding, because it doesn't have the capacity to let water go through. And you may recall back in oh five is the last time it flooded. Where, because that huge rainstorm where Main Street flooded, River Park flooded, Laughing Brook flooded and people couldn't cross for four or five hours. And the time before that was fifty-five. So every seventy, sixty years. I'm just wondering if we really, we've been getting these grants, of which I'm not a hundred percent sure are being reimbursed by the state for. We have, we hit our free cash a couple of years ago, if you recall, because of the lateness in them covering their payments. We have an in-kind payment to make now. We have to tap ARPA for part of the money for this current thing. I think we authorized thirty thousand uh, towards the in-kind. Or was I, we're going to try to use casino money.
I thought it was casino money.
Which we haven't heard back if they've approved that either. So I'm kind of wondering, looking at the numbers here, do we have a chance to look at this and say, we had a repair choice and a replace choice. And if we choose the repair choice, what's our liability per se? Why are we not looking harder at the repair choice? Because it might flood every sixty years? Is that, is that thing? And then the cost to, we're talking to Mark, he said, what are we talking with the two beams? He said, a lot less than this. You may recall when we did the Summers Road Bridge. And that closed because they had to like lift it up, weld a couple more plates under and put it back down because the state said you need more outriggers on it. Certainly came nothing like the price of replacing a bridge. Now, look at these things here. We talk about, actually by the bridge is one point three million. Temporary traffic control sign, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for a temporary sign. I wonder if they're hiring.
Do we have one of those on wheels?
That's what they, well, then they gotta, no, that's the portable changeable message sign they want eighteen thousand for. And then the permanent sign is a hundred and eighty-five thousand.
Why do we need a permanent sign?
Well, I guess we can't keep the temporary so, sign, whether we spend a hundred and seventy. I, some of these numbers here, I'm really just. And if it needs to be replaced, it needs to be replaced.
What's the traffic patrol sign gonna do anyway?
I, I have no idea. This is the first time I've seen this. You know, this is this budget here, it's like.
Like, hey, warning, there's a bridge coming up.
Right. And these are all the ancillary costs of the fact, right down here, when you get to, the actual buying the bridge is one point three. After you spent eight hundred thousand and the other. I'd like the opportunity to maybe invite Mark to a meeting, maybe really get a sense of this MVP stuff, and I appreciate what they've done in it. But is this really where we need to spend our money? What's the reason we're really not doing a repair?
Now, what's this we have here tonight?
This is the, um, letter of support, Brian.
Yeah, that's the letter of support for the.
For the MVP.
For the MVP, for the next version of the MVP that will get this from a hundred percent designed to shovel ready. And I also think that, more in particular for Mark, these MVP, are the MVP folks coming? They've asked to come the twenty-ninth, right?
Yeah, sooner than agenda for Monday.
So this might be a time for you to talk. Well, that's due thirty, twenty-fourth.
And that gets to the next point. Now, if they're saying here, you have an opportunity to apply for a grant that will cover replacing the bridge. Then, okay, then it's no harm to town. Great, we'll replace it and take care of that. But if we're looking at the fact that we've gotten, Don, half a million dollars or more in grants. And we don't have a shovel in the ground yet. All this grant money's been spent on studies, research, application, design, and we haven't. If this is such a, my gosh, a problem, it might flood, uh, two years down the road, nobody's noticed except there's a little.
Why I always ask, why they, why is the state mandating us fix Rockinundy, but then not this one?
That's my point too. We got two bridges they told us to replace, and they're gonna pay for them. If this was such a critical thing, don't you, on a major road, don't you think they'd be all over us?
Well, I think, I think there's two things going on. I think there's the municipal vulnerability grant, which we got in conjunction with East Long Meadow.
Right.
To study all the culverts and all that stuff. They did all that and that stuff. And then the bridge became a focal, focal point. Because the state said they have, will probably need some repairs. And then they looked at the flooding issue and I think they're trying to mitigate that. So I think there's two different things going on.
And I think you're right. We had the hazard study done a number of years ago, and there's a bunch of checkpoints in town.
Yeah, they did.
Checkpoints that could happen, but.
They did all the culvert, you know, counted the culverts, made it all that kinda stuff.
There's a huge pond up on Pondview that could release. But you get back into, is this a solution looking for a problem? Yes, the bridge needs some tender loving care. The spalling on the outside parts needs addressing. The state would like to see the outside beam one and ten replaced, but there's nothing wrong with two through nine. They're not saying the bridge is defective. The only people that talked about replacing the bridge is because of the potential for flooding events happen in the future.
If we sign these.
Does it obligate us?
Does it obligate us to?
To do it? No.
So if we sign these and we get a grant and pay for it, then that's good. If they say, forget it, you're not, you know, you're gonna have to pay fifty percent or, or blah, blah, blah. We can say, see you later.
Correct. And, and, and John, I think your point is, uh, a part of it's an indictment, I think, on the MVP program. Which focuses heavily on education and outreach and that kinda thing. So a lot of money goes not to projects. It's educational focused and then, and the other part is, is the design component of this grant. And I don't know, I mean, design's typically what, ten percent of construction costs? Um, so we're getting a design for, for fifty thousand dollars cash.
Well, some of their other objectives, and Craig, you remember this at the park, what was it, infiltration gardens, things like that? Great. Things like that. We're gonna have an informational set, session tomorrow, one of three different sessions, right?
Yeah, two, three, yeah, yeah.
Uh, six o'clock. Yeah, so.
And then they want to put beehives around the playground, right?
Actual bees?
I'm allergic, so.
Those are poll, well, the pollinators.
That's nice. Um, so I guess from that point of it, I've, I've, you know, the motion to authorize.
Calls by the time we get home.
Authorize the chair and the board to, uh, sign these letters.
And they're gonna come in next week anyhow.
Yep. Yep.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, Joe. Uh, cable TV.
I'm in favor of it. One of the games on.
Cut the cord.
Game's on right now, we gotta go.
Who's playing?
Hockey playoffs.
They play all the way through, they play through the summer, okay. Are the ruins still on the playoffs?
What do you have on the cable contract?
So, not much, based on, uh, Bill's last email. I have gathered two, uh, four handed charter invoices, two out of town invoices, he's gonna look at those. The real question that, that he's trying to get at here is whether, uh, whether this, whether the board of selectmen wants to consider peg access funding or not. That's really what it comes down to. If you don't wanna consider peg ac, asking for peg access funding, then, then I think it's pretty simple. It's the same contract. Right? And there's a set, there's a set fee that gets paid. Um, if you wanna try to get more out of charter, then, you know, then we go at it. But at some point, we gotta, we gotta make that decision, so. But he's gonna get back to us with.
What other hidden costs are there for peg access? I mean, obviously they'll, they'll fund certain things, but what happens a year down the road? You know, they're gonna maintain, upgrade equipment. Is there a minimum usage requirement to fill airspace, you know?
Yeah, I don't know the answer.
You know, maybe, maybe he can get the, give us those answers, like, is it, is it even worth it, you know? We're gonna be putting more, expending more to get something from them.
I can tell you, in one of the, one of the invoices, uh, the actual, the actual invoice from, from Southampton. There is a peg access, there's a separate peg access fee charge. There was actually two of them.
On the customer?
Yeah. But Wilburham didn't. Wilburham one dozen, and obviously they, they play around with how they advertise the cost that they take, so. I, I don't know. But at some point, I think a decision's gonna need to be made. Hopefully, Bill can come to a future meeting. He wasn't available today, or this week, apparently.
EV charging station.
So, I, I asked for this on, cause right after the advisory had the public hearing, we got a request from National Grid to, uh, for an easement. To, for, so that they could locate transformer to support the EV chargers. Um, so it was terrible timing. Um, the town council reached out to National Grid. And I, we think the best solution is, is if, if, if the board's willing to, um, give National Grid a replicable license. Temporary license, so that they can continue with the construction, continue with the work.
We did that at the landfill.
Pursue permanent easement at the fall. At the fall, I mean, uh, to some extent, National Grid will take a risk that the town will, you know, approve the easement, but. Um, they're willing to do that, so.
Do we have to vote on that?
No, they'll, they'll send us a document. They'll send us a document.
We have to vote to grant a license at some point.
Well, give them the license.
We'll send the document.
If you think that's a, a non-starter, then.
No, I, no, I think we need to do that, you know? We, we did the same thing when the solar put the landfill, they, at the last minute, they said they needed easement for all their pools. You know, after, after three years of building.
Yeah, move it here, move it there, move it here, yeah.
All right.
So that's what that is.
Uh, town administrators, uh, selectmen's reports?
Um, so the water commission, um, John Plaster's sitting right here, got an email today from Ty and Bond saying that there is some new, um, one-stop grants for housing, work and infrastructure updates. And they're willing to submit that application for us. However, it's going to cost, um, for their services to do so, and roughly forty-three hundred dollars. So we need to decide if we want them to go that route to submit for potential funding with a ten percent or twenty-five percent match.
You guys been selling water up in the district now for years.
We were, we were selling Perrier last year, weren't we?
No, no, I was just.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You guys get nothing really, really up on the water.
There's nothing, there's, I think, two, two paying customers.
I'd make a motion to, uh, fund this out of selectman expense.
Second.
I'll second it.
Second.
Oh, you made the one second, okay. All in favor? Any further discussion?
Yeah, use the good money, yeah, yeah, yeah.
All in favor? I, okay.
I will.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Well, we're, can we go back to correspondence?
We didn't get there yet.
No, we're with selectmen's report, correspondence before selectmen's report.
You skipped it.
I did, I know.
He's asking to go back.
Going back. Uh, we got a, a correspondence from the government study committee asking me about some funding for printing.
Yep.
And you've got some quotes.
Yep. I need seven hundred dollars or four hundred dollars if you want it in color, black and white, hundred copies.
We can take that out of selectmen's expenses.
Why not?
We got plenty. All in favor? The seven hundred dollar.
Color.
Oh.
Color.
That wasn't your motion. That wasn't your motion.
They put a lot of time into that, that they, they, you know, they put a lot there. All right, selectmen's reports, back to that.
The problem is that, you know, when you bring up these places, they put it on, on a color machine and they only have four pages that are in color. But they're charging for color for a page, yeah, exactly. Cause they don't wanna collate the color ones in. That's why, you know, you may only have two pie charts and you're paying the whole thing. Anyway, uh, the only other report, uh, planning has a meeting this week. Uh, I will say for those watching, even though the Glendale Solar is on the, it's only to move for a continuance. So there will be no action on Glendale Solar at that meeting on Wednesday. We had a meeting of the Senior Center Building Committee meeting this morning. Um, the main topic is obviously looking forward to presentation at the town meeting. There is a second forum on the thirtieth, uh, what that organization should be. And there was talk that, uh, the Friends are going to be putting signs around town, asking people to support the debt exclusion. Again, it is not an override, it's a debt exclusion. And how people should contact the Friends and if they wanna get a sign to support. And that information will be coming shortly, but if you know anybody on the hand and friends, such as Claudia and Joan, I believe, you can reach out to them. Uh, they did get the information that they did the resignation and the, the committee concurs with the selectmen that they don't, aren't looking for a replacement at this time. They're too close to their finish line and that's where they go.
I have no report.
What have you been doing?
Report.
What have you been doing?
Nothing.
Oh, quickly.
Out in polls?
No, 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 quickly.
Driving around town, counting all the polls.
I think Don and I would like to thank Heather Joliker and her crew.
Oh, yes, for that.
For the hand, the cleanup and the people that participated. Well, that was your backyard, Don, but I don't wanna. But I think Don did bring up a good point, you know, the people who do go around town and provide the clean environment for all of us. We're, we thank everybody that showed up. Also wanna thank what happened in the auditorium on Saturday as well.
Oh, yeah, that was a nice program.
Nice program done there, and all the different people, Park and Rec, Port of Health, uh, Library, all the vendors that were there. Um, some great pens for sale, I noticed as well.
Was rich.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, maybe you could donate some for the, uh, the board to something, that'd be great, autographed. Um, also, the Academy Hall had a good presentation. Well, I think I talked to Linda today, she said sixty, seventy people were there for that. Oh, good. Does show to Don's point, and Craig has said that before, that's a viable building to use for meetings. So, one question did come up from Linda, this goes back to the money we spent last year. The fences are up, the fire escape was repaired, but they didn't repair the, at the top, the landing from the fire escape. And it's rotted away. And there's also some rotting of the entrance as well.
I thought that was all part of that. Yeah, I thought that was part of that.
The wood part? No, I mean, the guy was a welder. He was just gonna weld the, you know, fire escape. He doesn't do wood.
Oh, I thought the platform was part of the, uh.
But the entrance part as well is, is, they're seeing some, some weight there. This goes back to Craig's point before, again, about facilities and looking over the town buildings.
Facilities manager?
Right. But in terms of getting that done, I'd suggest that we just reach out to Mark and maybe go over and take a look at it and see, you know. If you know somebody, you can just do some quick carpentry and get it done. Quickest way to do it. And that's it.
Just a couple of things. The National Grid work that was taking place at Allen Street and Summers Road intersection that has wrapped up. They still might have a little, they may have a few loose ends to, to tie up, but it's, it's not gonna be as bad.
It's not good with electricity.
This past week, um, we had a question, this was actually last week, that came through, why we don't have a school zone outside the school on North Road here. So that's another.
Must be the neighbor.
And then one thing to think about, once the, um, EV chargers go in, about establishing a revolving account for those funds. Cause we're, any, funds are gonna come in, funds are gonna, we're gonna need funds available to pay out.
Yeah.
The electric bill, so.
The one thing about the revolving account, the selectmen can establish one at any time. It just needs to be recertified the next town meeting.
So when revenue starts coming in and bills start coming through, it would be good to set that up. And then you can also dedicate revenue from that revolving account for certain purposes.
Huge, huge money.
On, on the topic of that Allen Street construction there, they said they're wrapping it up.
Yeah.
Um, I know I, I mentioned it when Mark was talking about them cutting the road up, that, um, when they repatched, it wasn't gonna cause any problems. I know it's a little, little wonky there as you're going through it right now. I don't know if Mark wanted to sign off on their repatching of the road, cause it doesn't look.
Yeah.
I think he said in the past sometime, I remember this came up with the water main thing.
He would require.
He likes to let it settle a little bit, then they maybe go back and put another little skim on top, you know? I mean, the big thing obviously was the manhole they had to put in for the.
Right. Yeah, you go through there now, you look at the road, so it's a little bit uneven. So I'm just worried about, you know, like the frosty's now and, you know, winter coming, and that's a, you know, high power area.
But, uh, further to that, I think we all saw the, the public chatter about the intersection. Obviously, it was the best control that intersection we had in quite a while. Shutting, shutting one road down. But.
That was a common, right? We'll shut down the road.
Shut the main road down, it's perfect.
There you go. Um, but I still go back into, you know, when we do go to investigate that further, I don't think you can fit a, a rotary in there. Around about there without too much taking too much land.
And I don't think that's for us to make that decision, though. I mean, we're not engineers on that, so.
No, I'm, I'm giving you my, just my personal thought. I think also a four-way stop doesn't work from just historical. Too many people are just gonna blow right through that Allen Street, whatever. I think we're gonna go all for a study at some point, maybe with casino money. But I think it's gonna come back to a traffic light. I really do.
We did authorize the, the study, so, right, so it's.
Right. And we have a, no, we authorized the application for the money for the study, right?
Yeah, I'm still waiting for proposals from Time Bond to forward.
Right.
For the gaming commission.
Yeah.
Which I should get this week, I think.
We're gonna wait a week. How many proposals do we have out that we haven't pulled a trigger on? We did get the final four, the number for, uh, Tharnburgers, right?
Two?
Yes, and that's all, yeah.
Get the final number, we'll do it, though.
The number.
Correct.
Right. Does that get into, I don't know if you're covering in your report about the requests down to the assessors? Cause that gets into funding. Or no, for overlay reserve.
Overlay reserve, yeah.
So we need, I think, do we need to take a vote to, cause they need to take a vote to release it. They need a formal request from us asking how much they can release. Again, going back to what happened a couple of years ago when we asked for that money.
Do they have to go to town meeting after that, though?
No, they don't have to. They just have to vote to release it, and then our motion articles.
Would say take it out of the overlay reserve.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so, so if the board makes a formal request, then it triggers a ten day deadline that the assessors have to investigate and certify what they have access.
Okay.
And take that vote within ten days.
All right, I've moved that, uh, we authorized the time there, so to reach out to, uh, the Board of Assessors for a formal vote to release money. Uh, some of money from the overlay reserve for use at the, in, annual town meeting.
And, and the, the email from Kelly mentioned that, that we should, that the board should specify a purpose.
For use at the annual town meeting.
Okay.
For use. Warrant articles at the annual town, well, we don't know until they.
Do we have to tell them a dollar amount, though, or do we have to tell them what we're looking for?
Well, I have a sense of what they, based on what they said, but.
Right.
Right.
But are, are they gonna say, oh, yeah, we have all this, we'll, we'll release X amount of dollars, or are they gonna wanna know what we're actually asking for funding for?
Well, warrant articles, I would, as a suggestion, we have the fifty thousand for the fire station RFQ. We have forty-three thousand for the Minichog WiFi. I thought there was a twenty thousand or something else. There aren't actually a lot of, there's sixty for the truck.
Mark was gonna put the lawnmower on, but he.
No, sixty footer truck. So that's a hundred and fifty right there, a hundred and fifty-three. And if you wanna ask for the ten thousand for the, uh, I mean, they're willing to let up the two hundred go. If you want to go ahead and fund the anniversary then with something non-tax money.
Yeah.
You know, we could do it. You know, we could do it.
It's still on there, so.
Right. So the only high-dollar things that are on the, uh, warrant are the ones going for ballot question. I'm sorry, the first water district thing, and then the, uh, senior center and the phase B.
Right, we don't need the, the ballot question for.
Everything else that's on there, well, we have the sixteen thousand for the assessors, which is almost an annual appropriation at this point. A thousand for the conservation. Twenty-five thousand for reserve money. So the one-time charges are the truck, Minichog, RFQ, anniversary.
We're saying like one-ten, then?
No, it, uh, it's fifty, forty, sixty, and ten.
Oh, you're, but you want to use the truck?
Well, we, if they're gonna give us up for two hundred and not put it on the tax rate, hey.
Okay.
Yeah. So if you want to list those four?
Yeah.